Could you go? The Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We continue our meetings these days in a COVID environment, and sometimes I like to have the camera just kind of fan out into the audience just to see that we are socially distancing. We do still invite the public in. Obviously, there's only so many chairs, so if people do decide to come more and more in the weeks to come, we'll have to somehow let people in a few at a time. But we thank people that are here tonight for coming, and for those of you that are watching at home tonight, live and/or in the weeks to come streaming. Just want to make a comment about, we have a process here that we allow people spontaneously, somewhat, to come and speak to us, address us here at the council called Open Podium. And Open Podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Prior to each council meeting, which are typically held the first and the third Tuesday of each month, we're back onto that schedule now. Open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at Open Podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, it does help us to be better prepared for what you're coming to talk about. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about Open Podium, please do contact the city manager's office. All right, I'm going to now call the HRA, which is the Housing Redevelopment Authority. It's, in some cities, there are special bodies that perform this function. Here in Eden Prairie, the city council is the HRA. So occasionally, we'll have an HRA meeting within a city council meeting. That's what we're having tonight. So I'm calling the HRA meeting to order. The first order of business within the HRA meeting is to approve our minutes from the last HRA meeting, which we had on January 7th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve the HRA minutes from January 7th, 2020.
There's a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, the only order of business within the HRA meeting tonight is to adopt the resolution approving the proposed 2021 property tax levy. So, Mr. Getchow.
Yes, thank you, members of the HRA. That's right. The item tonight is to approve a preliminary budget levy for the HRA. I will report later in the regular council meeting on the city's levy and budget a little bit, and there was quite a bit of discussion on that in our workshop as well this summer. But for the HRA, the city must set a cap or a ceiling on the proposed levy that they will have for the city or HRA or any taxing authority by the end of September. The city at the end of the year could lower that proposed levy, but it could not be raised. As it pertains to the HRA, we have a history of levying a certain amount of dollars that equate to the staff time that our city employees spend on housing and redevelopment projects. As you know, through the work of the task force, the housing task force, and they're going to be here at our next meeting providing their full report, we have a variety of funding sources for housing and economic development and different funds. But we use our HRA levy for some of the employee services for Housing and Redevelopment, for Housing and Redevelopment Authority. So we once again ask that the council adopt the resolution to set that proposed levy for $200,000 for the year 2021.
And just a comment about that, this is the same amount, for as long as I can remember that we've been doing this, 20-some years, we've never raised it, meaning that it's a 0% increase from last year and the year before that, and the year before that. We've talked about occasionally raising it, but we, as you mentioned, we have sources of funding, other sources that we've been using. Some cities do employ this HRA tax levy. We have not chosen to do that other than for the purpose you stated. So, any questions or comments prior to a motion, council? Can I have a motion then to approve this?
I'll move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2021 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2021 budget of $200,000.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, is there a motion to adjourn the HRA portion of this meeting?
I move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now we're back into the regular council meeting and moving down the agenda, something that I did not question why this was on here, and so I was surprised to find this out a few moments ago. The first item is the Eden Prairie Community Foundation recognition. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor. That was the intent. Hopefully, there'd be a little bit of a surprise for actually members of the council that are going to receive recognition for their service to the Eden Prairie Community Foundation. I would like to introduce the chair of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation Board, Tina Palmer, who would like to recognize some of our outgoing members of the foundation and those that have provided service.
Thank you very much. I'm Tina Palmer. I'm chair of the board of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation, and I want to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to come in and to recognize a couple of very, very special people for their incredible dedication to the foundation. I want to start off with council member PG. PG has been on the board of directors for, is it four years?
Four or five, something like that.
Four or five, something like that, exactly. And in 2018, he was unanimously elected to become chair of the foundation, and he did so beautifully that when we needed him, we went to him and said, would you be willing to do a second year? And he said, absolutely, despite the fact that he had his city responsibilities, his business responsibilities, and of course, his family responsibilities. And he's just been amazing to the foundation. This year, one of the things that impressed me the most was the fact that he was really a driving force in launching new strategic planning initiatives that will have a positive impact on the city of Eden Prairie for years to come. He's leaving some very big shoes to fill, and I'm personally very grateful that he's still going to be a part of the board because his mentorship is going to be so important to all of us. So PG, on behalf of the Eden Prairie Board, Community Foundation Board, I want to thank you for your leadership as chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's okay, we'll allow it.
I photo bombed it.
You did?
Excellent. Thank you, PG. You've been wonderful. So next, I want to talk a little bit about Mayor Ron Case. Ron joined the board in Eden Prairie Community Foundation in 2015, and he was actually the council's representative to the board. And when he came in, we were so happy to have him, and he just immersed himself immediately into our work. And he took on numerous leadership positions within the board, and including in the last year, again with the strategic planning, he took on a couple of areas and really helped to drive that work. And so after five incredibly dedicated years, in which he gave countless selfless hours of time to the foundation, he is leaving the board. And Ron, I'm so sad to see you go because you've been just a joy to work with, and you know, your wisdom has been incredible and very meaningful to me. And while he will no longer be involved in our day-to-day work, he's promised me, and I will hold him to this, that he will stay close and will continue to be a champion for our work in the community, which is really to try to make Eden Prairie a greater place for us all. So Ron, on behalf of the board and the entire community, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us crash your meeting for a few minutes. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina, for all that you're doing as well and taking this great responsibility on. It's, one of the things I think PG would agree to is that it's great to serve, but it's even better when your time is done and you've got people to step back, or not step back in, but to step in and continue on the good fight. So thank you so much for what you're doing. The board's in really good hands right now, and with the consistency of Mark Weber, who is more than just the, really the backbone of the foundation, but he ends up, in the work that he is doing, being the glue that's holding the entire community of nonprofits together. He really is an amazing person, and Eden Prairie is super fortunate to have Mark Weber. So, thank you. All right. One of the many disappointments of COVID this year, but again, people are trying to find silver linings. There are some positives this year, but nonetheless, we have not had some of the really fun and enjoyable and important events, from the state fair to July 4th to schooner days. But one of those is the Night to Unite, which we have always, for years, just thoroughly enjoyed, and the people of Eden Prairie have enjoyed it, and I think it's just spotlighted our amazing police and fire departments. So we did not have that in its traditional way with COVID. But we had looked at still doing something to gather food because that was one of the components of Night to Unite in the past. And so this year, several, five churches are coming together with Prop, along with the city. I believe the foundation might be at least integrally somehow a part of that as well. And I thought, by the way, let me just say, the big, big food drive is this weekend coming up Saturday and Sunday. Go out online, or I know that's being blasted out to 35,000-some emails, and it's on Next Door, but just if you are listening to this tonight, and I'm not real clear about where or when to drop off, go out online and find that out. But I thought that as a city council, we should declare a proclamation about this weekend and really encouraging people to be involved. So this is a proclamation signed by me, but it's on behalf of all of us up here as a city council. Whereas Prop is an integral part of the Eden Prairie community, and whereas in 2019, Prop provided food assistance, one of their many services, to 3,500 individuals from their fresh choice market, and distributed 770,000 pounds of food. And whereas Night to Unite, which is an annual end-of-summer community event, is typically paired with a food drive for Prop, during the 2019 Night to Unite, Prop received 9,179 pounds of food, $80 in cash, and $200 in gift cards to be used to aid the community. And whereas due to the coronavirus pandemic, Night to Unite has been canceled for 2020. And whereas the weekend of September 19th and 20th, 2020, Prop will be hosting a citywide food drive, Weekend to Unite. And whereas the city council encourages Eden Prairie residents to participate in any way that they can help those in need in our community. And now therefore be it resolved, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby declare the weekend of September 19th and 20th, 2020, this coming weekend, as the Weekend to Unite Prop Food Drive in the city of Eden Prairie, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council tonight, September 15th, 2020, signed by Ronald A. Case, Mayor. I do want to communicate one message that I heard from the director of Prop. It's always great to just receive food items, but ever, often and typically, people go through their pantry, and they pick out canned items that either have been there a while or that they're just not needing at the moment. That's all good, I mean, that's fine. But this year, they need strategically, tactically, specific items. And so I would encourage you to go out on the Prop website and find out what they need, and go to the grocery store when you go on your normal shopping spree, and buy the things that are specifically needed by Prop right now. In addition, if you want to obviously give other items as well. Council, anything else you want to add to that? It's a pretty important, big deal. I think we're all hopeful and excited for it.
I guess I'd like to say, if it's not convenient to go out and get something, they will cheerfully accept money so they can go out and get what they didn't get. And that's also a very important piece of keeping their food bank going, is to have some cash to fill in what didn't get donated. So, and not everybody does go out easily, but many could at least make a small cash donation on their website.
Ron?
Yes. So just want to add Kathy's point. Another big need for Prop is the rental assistance. So that's where the money comes, of the food and the rental assistance. So those people don't have any food at home, please donate anything you can. There are a lot of people there need rental assistance in the COVID-19 time.
Obviously, there's tremendous need across our country, in our state, in our county, but here in Eden Prairie as well. I'm not sure that the common perception outside of Eden Prairie always is that Eden Prairie has these great needs, but we do have up to 1,000 families that are regularly, typically, in need. And many of us in Eden Prairie have kept our jobs this year, and we actually feel blessed and fortunate. And if you are able to share that with some of our Eden Prairie folks and neighbors who are at the moment going through tougher times, that would be a really good thing. So we're hoping this weekend really makes up for some deficit. I know Prop has been having fairly good success, but also they have some gaps in their collection of food items. So I do hope that people have an outpouring of support for Prop and for this food drive this weekend. All right. Mr. Getchow, do you want to say something about the next item at first, or should I go right into? But we have somebody here tonight as well, or do you want to?
We do, Mayor. We have, I believe, Barbara Brant is a representative of the Direct Service Professional Group, and she is here to accept the proclamation that you're going to read for Direct Support Professionals Week.
Okay, fantastic. Typically, you know, non-COVID, we'll do a handshake and we'll pose for pictures, but I believe we'd handed you already the framed copy, so I'll read it, and thank you for coming tonight, and appreciate you being here and representing the professionals that I'm going to be reading about here with this proclamation. So proclamation, city of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota. Whereas direct support professionals are the primary providers of publicly funded, long-term support services for millions of individuals with disabilities. And whereas direct support professionals must build close, respectful, and trusted relationships with individuals with disabilities because they assist them with their most intimate needs. And whereas direct support professionals provide essential support that helps individuals with disabilities stay connected to their family, friends, and the community while living life to its fullest. And whereas direct support professionals provide a broad range of individualized supports, including meal preparation, medication assistance, bathing, dressing, mobility, and other daily tasks. And whereas an adequate workforce of high-quality direct support professionals is necessary for the state to meet obligations to people with disabilities and to minimize more costly settings, such as hospitalization or institutional care. And whereas direct support professionals is one of the fastest-growing positions in America in terms of demand, and yet low wages and demographic trends are creating a growing shortage of direct support professionals, leading to burnout and increased turnover. And whereas public officials have a key role to play in building awareness around and advocating for and addressing the issues facing this publicly-funded workforce. Now therefore be it resolved to honor and support the important work of direct support professionals in our community. The week of September 13th to 19th, 2020, in the city of Eden Prairie, will be proclaimed Direct Support Professional or DSP Recognition Week, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on September 15th, 2020, Ronald A. Case, Mayor. Thank you for all that you do, and you know, we've read those stats that if one is lucky enough to live long enough, 90-something percent of us become disabled in some form or another. And the older we get, obviously, if you make it to be in a frail person that's toward the end of their life in their high 90s, you will have direct support professionals assisting you. So it's, if, I guess if we're fortunate, it's in all of our futures. So again, thank you for all that you do and represent the group that are with the direct support professionals. Council, anything you want to add to that?
Do you want to give her an opportunity to speak?
What?
Do you want to give her an opportunity to speak?
Would you like an opportunity to speak? You don't have to. Okay. If you got nervous there, suddenly you can blame Councilmember Aho. We were trying, we were trying to be really polite, so you certainly could take the podium, but we understand it can be intimidating. All right, then we are moving on with our agenda, and the next item is actually to approve the agenda. Before we move there, are there any additions, any council member wants to add? And Mr. Getchow, I believe there's one item that you wanted to add.
Yes, Mayor. A brief report on Southwest LRT.
Okay. Council, anything else? Is there a motion then to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Minutes, do we have any questions about either one or any items on either one that you wish to question or poll? Then could I have a motion on both, approving both meeting minutes?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. City council meeting held Tuesday, September 1st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I will, sometimes in the past, we've, people that have missed meetings, we've not had them vote, but the Roberts Rules of Order actually allows me to do that. But I just wanted to say thank you to Acting Mayor Brad Aho for leading that meeting, and the rest of you. It sounds like it went well, and Councilmember Aho is more efficient, it sounds like, possibly than I am.
There was not much on the agenda. We only have, had A and B on the consent.
All right, well, you did good with it. So, all right, so is there, let's see, I did the, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any items any council member wishes to question, have removed temporarily, or should we vote on all of them at one time? All right, I just have to add upfront that I didn't realize this at first by reading it, but items F and G have to do with United Health Group Optum's participation in the funding of both of those street improvements. So I will be abstaining from this entire, let's see, Maggie, should we pull just those two, or should I abstain? Yes, pull those two. So we'll vote on A through E and H through J, make a motion for that, and I'll vote on that, and then we'll make a motion for F and G, and I will abstain. So is there a motion for A to E and H through J?
I'll move approval of A through E and H through J.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, is there a motion for approval of items F and G?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstain one. All right, we have no public hearings this evening. Payment of claims, any items to question, anything that stuck out to you that you want to find out more about? If not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
Approve of payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right, moving down to, let's see, we want to do the reported city manager certifying the levy, then we'll move to Mr. Ellis, or you.
Sure. Yeah, I'll introduce Mr. Ellis for LRT, but we can certainly do the budget piece right now, Mayor, if that's okay.
That's good, let's go.
All right. As I mentioned at the HRA meeting about 15, 20 minutes ago, the, all cities in Minnesota need to set their preliminary levy by the end of September. And the levy and the budget, you know, actually, you're always working on your budget, but the levy, the property tax levy is then finalized, has to be finalized by the end of the year. And the preliminary levy that's set by the end of September can only be lowered, it cannot be raised. So we always talk about this as being the meeting where we set our tax levy ceiling. But what we've done for many years is prepare a budget and a tax levy that we think can have preliminary and final approval as the same budget, at least for the last almost 10 years, we've been able to do that. In the 2021 budget, this is the second year of a two-year budget, so in Eden Prairie back in 2019, we were actually preparing our 20 and 21 budget. And interestingly enough, in this COVID environment, there obviously have been some effects on the city, you know, mainly from a revenue point of view, and the council's been briefed on this in detail. But luckily for our community, the revenue concerns that we have are a small percent of our general fund budget. So as we were finalizing the levy and budget for 2021, we were very confident that we could adopt most, if not all, of what we had planned and anticipated for 2021 in the second year of our budget. We do have, you know, it's an interesting twist, and it's not necessarily built into the budget for 21, maybe more so in 20, is the city will be receiving or has received some COVID, federal COVID dollars, but those cannot be used to replace lost revenue, which is our main issue with recreation revenue. But they could fill any gaps that would exist in the budget. We're still working on that, and that's a year-long, that'll take through the rest of the year as well. But in terms of this budget for 21, what will happen is, following the preliminary approval, all the residents, property owners of Eden Prairie will get notice of their proposed tax for 21, and they'll be invited to a public hearing that we're asking you to set tonight for December 1st. And that would be the evening that we would provide a full presentation on the entire budget. We would hold a public hearing. This is also the year, actually, that we would also hold a public hearing and adopt our 10-year capital improvement plan as well, because you spent some time this summer discussing the capital improvement plan. If you look at the packet, anyone wants to download the packet, there is a sizable document. It provides information more at a higher level, not a line-by-line level, but it provides a really good level of detail on the proposed budget and tax levy for next year. And the proposal is to increase the levy from 2020, 3.2%. And as you know, that's actually a very modest increase as compared to some of our peers, and also is in line with what we were proposing to approve last year. It does include actually a budget increase that's lower than that. So the budget that's proposed for next year is to increase 2.8% and flat debt. What that would mean to a property taxpayer in Eden Prairie is, at the median-valued home level, we're seeing an increase of only a percent or a percent and a half in the median-valued home. And the median-valued home for this coming year is $415,800, just up from under $415,000. This particular levy proposal would decrease that home's taxes by about $5, which is 1/3 of 1%. I think the mayor mentioned in the workshop that the counties proposing, Hennepin County's proposing more of a levy freeze that would lower the county portion of our residents' taxes by approximately 9%. So that would be two levels, two local units of government that probably, their alone make up maybe, you know, 50 to 60% of the tax bill, decreasing in 2021, which is probably, you know, something we need to be thinking about and being fiscally prudent in the current environment. But at the same time, and more importantly, and we'll talk a lot about this in December, is not sacrificing our level of services or the, or at the, at the level that we provide them. So this budget does not propose any cuts in services. Actually, as you recall from the discussion this summertime, we're actually the discussion this summertime, we're actually following through on our proposal to add to our Public Safety Department and Police Department with personnel, was proposed with a two-year budget last year. So, that being said, the recommendation is to approve next year's tax levy and set a public hearing for December 1, and again, the council has until the end of the year to finalize the levy and budget, you just would not be able to raise the levy beyond what's proposed in the resolution tonight.
Council, any questions? Any comments anyone wants to make?
I just think it's a good point to make, the last point that Mr. Getchow made was that this is, just sets the upper boundary limit, it could always be lowered, but we don't anticipate doing that, but just so people know.
I guess I'd also like to thank staff for doing their usual good job of giving us outstanding services, and doing so at a very, very modest increase, usually below the cost of living, and they produce this semi-miracle every two years, and I think the citizens of the city are very happy about that, because we are in the bottom 15% of all the taxes in the whole Twin City area, and I'd like to thank you for keeping it very reasonable for our citizens.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one more comment is, this is, still, we will be the lowest fourth in our neighboring cities in terms of amount of tax we pay compared to the other cities.
No, there's a couple, a couple good comparisons, so our city tax rate is proposed to go down, so that, that's part of the, the part that I mentioned with the $5 decrease in taxes, and so our tax rate, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned, is kind of in the lower, you know, probably in the lower 5% of the whole metro area, but in terms of cities our size, larger cities in Hennepin County, you know, we're still in that bottom 15%, and we would definitely stay there, because we're lowering that rate even more. When it comes to the preliminary levy, all types of city councils are spending this entire month setting that preliminary levy, and some may change that levy between now and the end of the year, so I do know there are some communities that might set 6% levy, and then maybe take that back a little bit, so I never want to hold a city to what they may do with their preliminary levy. We haven't typically done that. I think part of that, again, is when you get that mailed notice, that statement that you get in the mail, it would be nice for that statement to reflect what you're most likely going to pay in taxes, but, but different cities may have issues that are unknown, and they want to set a preliminary levy. But that being said, Councilmember Narayan, I think there's only one or two cities that I've surveyed and know of that are looking at a preliminary levy lower than what we are.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a few comments. First, in terms of education, many of you, I realize, realize, when you get your tax bill, that it represents the school district portion, the county portion, the city, the city of Eden Prairie portion, other taxing jurisdictions, all that goes together, the actual city responsibility of it is about 25%, so we, we can move it, right? I mean, what we do impacts residents, but at a 25% level, so we could be lowering people's taxes tremendously, and their taxes still might go up, right, if the school district had a bond referendum, or if the county had needs that they needed to address. So, we all kind of move together, sometimes independently, but at least we're aware of what each other's doing. The other thing I want to comment on is that statistics and numbers and math gets thrown out just a lot, and it can get confusing even to sometimes the policymakers, but there are these three numbers that get associated with people's taxes, and the public probably hears a lot about them, one's the levy, the other's the budget, and the other's the actual tax impact on someone's home. And they move together, but they don't move exactly the same, right? They're, they're correlated, but depending on the state formula, depending on various, you know, economic factors going on, whether home values are increasing, I mean, there's just all kinds of variables in there. So, this year, to have our levy going up 3.2%, which is the tax rate that we set on a per, was it $1,000 a value, or whatever that tax rate ends up being, but it's, it's a ratio, right? And in theory, if your community's growing and it's healthy, and the tax base is increasing, that you can raise the same amount of money from a larger tax base, which then lowers your tax rate. So, in theory, a healthy community wants to have a tax rate that's going down, and that's been true of Eden Prairie for decades. We are tax, occasionally, there's been some glitches, but for the most part, our tax rates moving down. That's the, that's the number even, I understand what Councilmember Narayan is saying about, hey, are we the lowest tax? I'm, I'm not as concerned about being the lowest levy, I want us to be a very healthy tax rate moving down, because that means economically, we have a healthy environment. And then, if our levy's 3.2 and our budget's going up 2.8, it sounds like our tax impact on the average $425,000 house will be down a third of a percent. So, those are all good numbers, we don't necessarily control as much as we'd like that going down one-third, there's other factors that we're fortunate right now to be experiencing, but nonetheless, it's nice to see that that impact is going to be low. The other thing I wanted to add to what Councilmember Aho said, and then Mr. Getchow talked about that too, is that we typically, I'm not going to call it a game, but we don't, we don't play with that setting the levy high, knowing that wink, wink, we'll move it down. We just have never really done that. We try to hit it as close as we really mean it to be, so in all the years, I can't remember a time that we set it and we actually lowered it, because we're so, our staff is so good to Councilmember Nelson's point, and we just are good at setting that number, and we're honest and straightforward and trustworthy. Doesn't mean that other cities are not, again, to Mr. Getchow's point, they have their reasons at times. And then, finally, to Mr. Narayan's point, Councilmember Narayan, our goal, I don't think is, should ever be to be the lowest taxing city around. I mean, I'm very proud, if you take a $300,000 house in Eden Prairie and you plop it into Bloomington, or you plop it into Edina, or put that house down into Minnetonka, I'm happy when that's a lower tax, and it usually is, depending on school district tax. But again, my goal, and I think are the rest of the council here too, is to deliver quality services efficiently and responsibly, and, and really addressing and meeting the needs of what our residents want, and I think we do that. There's always going to be debate on, should we lower our budget, should we spend less money here, should we spend more money there? Those are all decisions that we, as a council, that's why you elect us, to, to listen carefully to what we believe is in the best interest of the most people, and I think we do that. But anyway, I just wanted to comment on that. I, I'm happy when our taxes come out reasonably lower, and we always are in the bottom third to bottom fourth of all the neighboring cities, but that's not my goal in itself. They have issues that are different than we do, I'm not judging them. Certainly, Minneapolis and St. Paul are core cities, have tremendously greater issues, different issues, I should say, I'm not minimizing what we face, but just different issues. But nonetheless, I, it's not just to be low in taxes, to be high in quality and responsible with our taxes, and I believe we do that. All right, is there a motion to approve the levy that, as has been pointed out, can always go down by the final approval of December 1? But is there a motion to read all that and adopt this resolution?
I would move to adopt the resolution that certifies the proposed 2021 property tax levy to be $41,014,490, and sets December 1, 2020, as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment, and accepts the proposed 2021 budget of $53,55,474, and consents and approves the HRA tax levy of $200,000.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor, we thought it'd be timely, having a council meeting tonight a day after hearing that the federal government, the FTA finalized the just-under-one-billion-dollar grant award for Southwest Light Rail Transit. So, I think you may remember in September, or in August, actually, that that was coming, but there still needed to be final approval from the President and the legislature, so that is now final. It, it is a done deal in terms of the federal money coming in for Southwest Light Rail Transit. So, we thought it might be a good opportunity to note that, and then have our Public Works Director maybe just give a brief update on, on activity in Eden Prairie. You may recall, the Met Council Southwest LRT Project Office was in here, I believe it was our first in-person meeting after having some virtual meetings, so that may have been in like late May or June, to give us an update, but we've had a full summer of construction, and we're moving into the fall, so we thought we would share the news on the federal funding agreement, and Mr. Ellis could briefly talk about project progress.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Case, City Councilmember. So, of course, the full funding grant agreement finally was approved, and there was a very real chance that it was not going to be reproved, so it is cause for celebration, because it's providing $928 million to our region to help build out what is a very important part of our transportation system, which is light rail. So, maybe just to take a step back, it was November of 2018 when the construction contract was awarded, so really, we've been under construction since the end of 2018, and there's no doubt about it, 2020 was the big, heavy construction year. There were a lot of interruptions to traffic, there were a lot of interruptions to businesses, maybe one of the silver linings of COVID happening was that we didn't have as much of an impact as we were anticipating, had businesses been at full capacity, everybody working in offices, it really would have been disruptive, so there is that silver lining. Having said that, with this project, because there are so many bridges and tunnels and major structures that were being constructed, I think when Jim Alexander was here earlier in the year, he talked about there were 28 cranes in Eden Prairie alone working on this project, and if you think about that, that will never happen in this community again, that's how massive this project was. And so, that's what they were working on, they were working on those very complicated, long timeline components of the project, which were the bridges that we have over Technology Drive and Prairie Center Drive, we have one over 494, we have one that goes over Valley View and Highway 212 on-ramps, another one that goes over Nine Mile Creek and Flying Cloud Drive, another one that goes over Flying Cloud Drive, Shady Oak Road, and Highway 212 in one structure, and then, of course, there's the tunnel that's going under Highway 62. So, those are well underway, a lot of them are starting to transform the skyline around Eden Prairie, as you drive around, you're starting to see those superstructures take form, so this was a big year. And before winter sets in, you're going to start to see some of those kind of start to wrap up, some of those roads being put back into service, like Technology Drive over by Hampton Inn, we'll start to see that get repaved, we're starting to see over on Viking Drive and Flying Cloud Drive, the access into those hotels tucked in behind 212 is starting to open up, I think that was opened and paved today. So, you're going to start to see some of our streets that have been under major construction start to come back to life. 2021 is going to shape up with a little bit more heavy construction, they do have some work to do over that 212 structure, the Shady Oak Road, Flying Cloud Drive, Shady Oak Structure, but I think we've seen the worst of it, there might be a little bit of pain in 2021 as they finish some of those major components. Once that's done, they'll start connecting the bridges with the track work, and that should be less impactful in Eden Prairie, because much of our alignment doesn't go through existing corridors, it's behind businesses, it's in excess right-of-way. So, hopefully, less pain coming in 2021. And then 2022 is going to look like a lot of the finishing touches being placed on the alignment, the overhead power, the catenary pole, some of the decorative lighting will go in place, again, much less disruptive, it'll start looking like an LRT system, you'll start seeing test runs up and down the alignment as their timing from Eden Prairie to Minnesota, they're working out some of the bugs with the interaction with traffic signals, so you'll start to see that in 2022, and then 2023, start taking riders that can jump on LRT here in Eden Prairie, go up to Minneapolis, U of M, or continue on to St. Paul, or with one transfer, you can head on down to Mall of America. A couple other things I just want to remind the council, 16 stations on this alignment for Eden Prairie, I think that's a huge win for our community. Some other things, this is going to be a great complement to our existing excellent bus transit system that we have, are, quite honestly, some of the best in the region, trail systems that we've built out, and then our high-class highway system, so we know it takes a mix of all of those to be competitive regionally, nationally, even globally, so, you know, Eden Prairie is going to be very well-positioned where we have this full suite of transportation services available to our residents and businesses. So, that's kind of the update, where we're at with construction, what to expect in the next few years, but this week was definitely an exciting week for, for everybody.
Don't run off yet, any questions of Mr. Ellis, any comments you want to make? This was really exciting, and my, my texts, texts on my phone lit up, you know, in the morning with, starting with the mayor thread from St. Louis Park Hopkins out, everyone was quite excited, and, you know, we knew, to your point, a lot of things could have gone wrong along the way, but once it got out of the President Trump's office and went to Congress, I mean, still, I guess, could have gone wrong, but it was 99% chance, but nonetheless, it was just great to have completely all the boxes checked, and it's a done deal now. This morning, I guess that it had been labeled the Minneapolis SWLRT project that received approval, and so a couple of the mayors along the route were saying, it's really the Southwest, it's not just Minneapolis, and a couple others said, no, no, it's, Minneapolis definitely anchors that, and then I added in, and nobody responded back at all. I said, well, Minneapolis starts, Eden Prairie ends, it's 50-50, it could be called the Eden Prairie SWLRT. No one answered back, so I, that did not hold a lot of weight there, I guess, yeah. At any rate, I think incredibly exciting for Eden Prairie, and just the infusion of what is, what do we still guess, six to eight million dollars of economic, pretty immediate infusion, and then just knowing that it's the largest public works project in the history of the state of Minnesota in terms of jobs, I mean, well, in terms of just money spent, but if you think about the jobs, that's pretty phenomenal, so it's quite exciting. And all of our city staff too, thank you so much for all the work that all of you have done getting it this far, I know that a lot of hours were spent on that, so, yes.
I've represented the city on Southwest Light Rail Committees since 2008, so I'm extremely happy that it's finally going to be filled and comes together, we've gotten a lot of housing up, you know, there'll be more development because of it, and I think it will also bring a lot of younger families out here who want that kind of thing, so I was quite pleased after spending that much of my time over that many years that it's going to come to a finish, a good one.
Former Mayor Nancy Terlukens was deeply involved for over a decade, and I let her know last evening, and she sent me back a note this morning, she's quite thrilled herself. So, just, we owe a lot of thanks to staff through the years, decades, former council members, mayors, just a whole lot of people, regionally, of course, have had their hands in this, so our debt of gratitude goes out to a bunch of people, so I think it deserves a round of applause for this, I think it's pretty amazing. All right, thank you. Anything else to come before the council this evening? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
In that case, I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting today.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.[1770.51]